We can bring the meeting to order. I have to announce that this meeting is being taped by Area 58. If you would join me in giving salute to the flag, please.
Let's reach us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Thank you. We're going to skip around a little bit on the agenda here tonight because we have to -- the Silver Lake Regional School Agreement is on or to be discussed, and we have quite a crowd of Silver Lake people here, so we don't want to hold you up too long. So why don't we go right to Superintendent? If you would take the podium up there to speak so that you can be recorded and we can all hear you.
Sure, if I may refer to the chair.
Oh, whatever.
You may not.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
But that doesn't mean you get away with not answering questions eventually.
I think we have these.
We might already have them.
We already have these. I have these. We want to pass them out to the audience, but we have that also.
Yep.
Thank you. Save some paper there.
So my husband would tell you I don't need a microphone. Oh, thank you. For anyone who doesn't know me, I'm Paula Hatch and the Chair of the Silver Lake Regional School Committee, and my compadres are with me tonight. I thought it would be helpful for anyone who doesn't know what I'm going to speak to, whether they see this online later or whether in the room, to just give a little bit of an overview of what the issue is we're going to talk about, if that's okay?
Sure, please do.
All right. So Silver Lake hosts a pre-K program, serving students of the three communities, Plimpton, Kingston, and Halifax, ages 2.9 to 5 years old. We've hosted this mass-required-by-law program, Integrated Preschool, since the 1980s. About a year ago, several months ago, we became aware that perhaps our regional agreement does not cover our ability to service the pre-K for the three towns in aggregate. So we worked with council and we worked with DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and did find that the regional agreement does not cover our pre-K offering. It is completely silent. Our regional agreement covers grades 7 through 12. So we worked with DESI. They determined that we absolutely had to take corrective action. The corrective action is really a choice of three things. Establish individual pre-K programs within the three towns themselves; that would be very costly. Amend the regional agreement to incorporate or codify the pre-K program into the agreement. Or fully regionalize, and to be honest with you, DESI really pushed that. That obviously is not a solution. That is a short-term solution. That would be something, if it was agreeable, would be down the line. DESI gave us a deadline of December 31st of this year to have taken corrective action on this issue. In essence, we're running the pre-K in an illegal fashion, if you will, under mass law. So the regional school committee, as well as the joint school committees, which is the elementary schools in the three towns, debated the issue and did decide to go ahead and amend the regional school agreement to incorporate the pre-K program into it. We worked with DESI and council. We came up with a fresh draft, and that has to be voted and approved by the three towns at town meeting. What is updated in the regional agreement are a couple of things. First of all, the incorporation of the preschool in the document. Secondly, a lot of mass law has changed over the years since it's been refreshed. So we vetted that entire document. It is completely up-to-date to current mass law. And then, thirdly, every 10 years, that regional agreement does have to be updated for the census. So we updated for the 2020 census, which did cause a little bit of change in the weighted voting of the committee members. DESI wanted us to have a more refined voting weighting per member than what we previously had. So those are the things that we have updated for. Now, what has to happen is we have to go before town meeting and have this approved. Again, all three towns must approve the regional agreement for it to be in effect. Plimpton has had their town meeting already. Kingston has had their town meeting. Both towns approved the regional amendment with no discussion and no questions. Plimpton's town meeting, quite frankly, was six minutes long. It was the only warrant article. It was amazingly quick. So what we'd like to do tonight is make sure that we're positioned to be successful, that if there's any questions we can answer for you folks, that we answer them. Are there other warrant items that will be on the December town meeting warrant so that we have, you know, a number of different things to discuss, that we are insured to have a quorum? And any materials or PR that you folks think might be helpful? We really want to make sure Halifax is the last town to approve it. Let's get it done. Let's make sure we're successful without any kind of hitch. So with that, I would open it up to any questions or comments you might have.
Anybody on board have any comments or questions?
Just, I think, quickly, Paula, just so that people can have it. I know folks will ask about costs. So they're going to want to know, is this going to affect our taxes? What are the cost changes? That's a question that's going to come up. So just for the record and folks can see, to answer that question before we even get to town meeting.
Sure, absolutely. And I'm going to defer to Christine Healy, our Finance Director, in a moment, but I will say a couple of things. We had done one run of numbers using the enrollment from last year versus the budget from last year, and had seen a decrease of, you know, some size for Halifax. Kingston saw a little bit of an increase. Christine has since run refreshed numbers with enrollment as of this October 1st, and she can speak to that in a moment. It is fluid. Every year will be different. Every budget is different, and enrollment numbers change year over year. So what we're sharing with you now is what we know now. Okay?
And then just any additional staffing is the only question I have.
Yep, and we did approve, a couple of months ago, the joint and the regional school committee did approve the hiring of a principal specifically for this program. This program is housed in the Kingston Elementary School, and right now, it's the overseeing of the program is done by the principal of that elementary school to some extent. You can't do that, we're not regionalized K through 12. So it was imperative that we bring onboard a principal specifically for that program. That's already being rolled into our budget numbers for this year, and again, it was an add to staff that was approved by both the joint school committees as well as Silver Lake.
Thanks. Can I ask a question, because I'm really unfamiliar with the program, the preschool, was it preschool?
Integrated preschool program.
Is that open to everybody, or is it a lot? I mean, how did somebody get into it? And you say it's all housed in Kingston. It'll stay in Kingston?
It will stay in Kingston. They have the space for it. How the students come into it, especially where it's integrated, I would actually defer to the Superintendent in a moment to answer.
Okay, thank you.
To be clear, it will stay in Kingston as long as this is passed a town.
Right.
So if the town became responsible for it, if they objected to it, we would be responsible in our system, and we would be responsible for staff.
And that's Gordon Law's Regional School. We just got identified for the camera. It's okay.
And one other thing I would add to that is we did incorporate in the amended regional agreement the ability for any town to house the program now or in the future.
Okay. Yeah, that way it'll be recorded.
Just so we can get it on camera.
Everyone will hear it.
Jill Peru, Superintendent, Silver Lake Regional Schools. In terms of the Integrated Preschool Program, admission into that program is based upon student needs, specifically criteria in terms of their special education needs. And then, if space allows, students are also allowed to apply to the integrated program so that the students with special needs can have a more inclusive environment with peers. But sometimes we are limited in the number of students that we can accept based upon space, faculty, programmatic needs of the children who are required to be there. The students who are not required to be there pay a tuition to participate.
Is it open equally to all three towns, or is it
Yes.
weighted one way or another?
No.
I see, okay. Thank you. I think we had a question about finances, maybe? Or I guess it would be really the assessment is what you're asking about.
I'm going to see if I can help with that.
I bet you can.
Presently, the way it works is that the preschool program is part of the elementary school budget. So the elementary budget pays for the tuition for those students, as well as the tuition for the out-of-district preschool students, if there are any that are out of district. So Halifax currently budgets for all of those costs for those students. When I ran the information of adding the integrated preschool students to Silver Lake's assessment, that had a significant change for Halifax. Halifax is paying far more for those individual costs, those individual students, than they would be paying if that were brought into the assessment formula. When it's brought into the assessment formula, they're paying their 30, 31-ish percent towards the cost of that. And what's happened in the past four years is that the enrollment of preschool is not proportioned with the Halifax's enrollment in the district. For instance, Halifax in the region is approximately 30, 31%. Their enrollment in preschool is in the 40% range, which is much higher, and they have students that have more needs and more costly needs. So Halifax has currently been paying the cost for all those individual students. If this fell into the regional agreement, they'd be paying their 30, 31-ish percent of the assessment. But Silver Lake's budget will also change because they'll be bringing on the cost to run that program. Currently, that's a revolving program that's tuition-based. All those costs will be brought onto Silver Lake. The teaching staff, the contracted services, the transportation, all those costs will now be included in the Silver Lake budget. So theoretically, your assessment will go up for Silver Lake, but your amount for the elementary budget will go down.
Okay.
And that will change every year. That's, we looked at the past, I looked at the past six years of information, and six years ago was the last time that Halifax's percentage of enrollment in preschool fell below the enrollment of the district. For the past four years, it's been 37% and above.
Awesome. Thank you. I appreciate that, Christine. Thank you. Okay. Any other, anything else you want to tell us about it, or I suppose you want the Board to take a position on it?
A position, and again, wanting to be positioned for success, to see this be approved in, you know, December 14th, I think it is. Are we the only, we're not the only article on the warrant? There'll be other things that bring other population of people in?
Yeah, we should have no problem getting quorum.
Okay.
Well, we'll see. If we have to, we'll put something on with dog leashes or something. That draws everybody's vote.
It's so critical because if for some reason this didn't pass all three towns, DESI would allow us to finish out the school year, this school year, but expect us to have the individual programs established and ready in September of '24. So it's, this isn't a big deal, but it really does need to go through.
Okay.
If I can, Mr. Chair, I'll say I'm on record as supporting this idea wholeheartedly. I've read through everything. To me, it's a no-brainer. I mean, we have to get compliant. It's the least amount of change, as far as I'm concerned, with the options that are on the table, and I will be wholeheartedly supporting this measure come December 14th.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Jean?
Can you just explain again if, say, Halifax, a town meeting, posts this down, which I don't anticipate, but then what happens before September? Do the other towns get to participate in this program, and we don't? There are all three towns that have to establish their own pre-K program.
Jean, and if you don't, go up to a microphone or take this.
We want people to hear it so that they can
You want people to hear it.
Yeah.
Either take this
They can get the information they need.
You want just me or the woman asking?
The question, too.
Maybe Jean could ask a question again.
Take two.
Now that you know how to practice run.
Hi, I'm Jean Galan, Cranberry Drive, and I was just wondering what would happen if at town meeting Halifax decided not to support this? To the Halifax students specifically, I'm worried about and thinking about if this, the ones that are currently in the program, what would happen?
Thank you. So again, it is so imperative that we pass this warrant article. If for some reason it was not successful, it impacts all three towns. Halifax, Plimpton, and Kingston would all have to establish their own individual pre-K, Integrated Pre-K school programs by September of '24, house and run the program themselves. It would be extremely costly for all three towns.
Okay. Do we have any other comments or questions?
I have a question.
Sure. Either take the mic or come up to the podium, whichever you're more comfortable with.
Jim Walters Orchard Circle. So you mentioned a lot of percentages, and that's really, that's fantastic. Do we have finite numbers that define that? So out of a class maximum size of 25 students, 41% of Halifax students is how many people are currently enrolled.
Why don't we, why don't you give her the mic? Let me, well, Paula, you want to just grab it, she's going to have to jump up and down.
Right now, we have, I believe it's 138 students enrolled, 17 staff members, and I'm going to let Christine speak to the percentages a little bit more.
That's pre-K? Pre-K only is the 117?
Pre-K. 138.
138.
Yes.
And that's a maximum class size of 25, right?
25. Can I next?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So in the pre-K, not only developmentally, but also because of their significant needs, the class sizes are much smaller. These are students with significant impairments in many cases. So depending upon the students' needs, you may find a class of perhaps six or seven.
Okay.
Just to go back to the enrollment numbers, the number that Paula mentioned was the full program with students on IEPs as well as peer model students.
Okay.
The costs that we're talking about are associated with the students on IEPs. There are 78 in total for this current year. Of that total, 35 of them are from Halifax. That's 44.87% are from Halifax.
35 of the 138?
35 of the 78.
Of the 78.
Yes. The peer model students, there isn't a tuition paid for them by the towns. They're, you brought into the program, so to be in an integrated program, so the students in IEPs have the experience with students that are peer models that don't have disabilities.
Okay. And if I read this document correctly, it's a 2/3 vote that's required at the town meeting, right?
All three towns have to.
All three towns, but
That's required to amend the agreement
Right.
Under any circumstance.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions, or anything else you want to have another chance at telling the people that might watch this, other than it's really important?
Thank you for supporting the students in your town.
Okay. So can we have a motion by the Board to support this agreement change?
I would gladly make a motion to support the proposed agreement change for the Silver Lake School District to include pre-K into their regional agreement.
Okay, we have a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Best of luck. We hope it works.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for coming in.
All right. So we don't have Mr. Payless, so the next thing we're going to do is
One, two, three, so all three of them.
All right. So we're a little bit behind schedule, so I apologize, and we'll try to catch up. Stephanie Aquino, Aquino?
Hi. Come on up, please. Yeah, right there.
And this is for a one-day beer and wine license at the Farm at Raven Book for a fundraiser on November 25th.
Right.
Why don't you just tell us a little bit about it?
So I don't know if you guys have been to the farm, but it's amazing. Last year, Kimberly and Matt, who own the farm, invited us to come. I work for Barrel House Z in Weymouth, and they do a fundraiser Thanksgiving weekend. So this one, I think, is for the Halifax Food Pantry. So they invite us. Sarcastic Swine will be there. I think Victory Axes comes, and all of us donate some of our proceeds back to Matt and Kimberly, and then they, you know, make a donation to the food pantry at the end of the weekend. So it's a three-day event. We're just hoping to be there Saturday. So it's a good time, hang out in the trees.
Okay. This has gone by through all the police and the fire, and it's all been approved?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Any questions from the Board?
No, excited.
Are you coming out?
So we make
Drink some beer?
We'll make a Barrel House Z, is it?
Mm-hmm.
Is that your brewer?
Yep.
Oh, I see, okay. What's your best beer?
Bamboozled by Hops is an IPA that is really popular. Yeah.
What about seasonal stuff? You have any seasonal?
We do. We have a
This is your chance to promote your stuff.
We have a cranberry sour coming out this week.
All right.
Gingerbread, that's coming out, and there's a one in a, like a barrel, a whiskey barrel. We'll be pouring that soon.
Fantastic.
Can't wait to try.
'Tis the season.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the one-day liquor license?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good luck. All right. Diane Ruxton. We're almost on schedule with you. How about that?
Move a second.
Debbie, you or Jean?
Yeah.
Go ahead. So this is for appointment to the Library Trustees, and I was a little bit confused. So this is a term that ends on 2026, but it
Well, it is. The term's still 26, but because it's an elected seat
She's got to run in a.
Yeah, the position will be on the ballot
I'm aware of that.
In the county elections.
All right, I just wanted to make that
The way our bylaw works is if there's an opening mid-year, then the Board of Trustees would vote to appoint a candidate, and then that appointment would be affirmed by the Board of Selectmen. So the Board of Trustees have done that, and now here, here Ms. Ruxton is before the Board of Selectmen.
All right. And good to see you back in the town
Thank you.
Town government again.
Glad to be back.
Diane was a long-term on the much-maligned Wage and Personnel Committee. That's a real hard place to be, so welcome back.
Thank you.
Any interest, why you want to, tell us why you want to do this, or
I was on the Board before, and I didn't pass my papers in on time. I was in Europe.
You didn't have to say that.
But in actuality, I didn't want to get off the Board, and I was in Europe the day it was supposed to be passed in. So I was on vacation. So I'd like to be back on the Board.
Good, okay. And any questions from the Board of
No, just want to thank her for her service to the town.
Thank you.
She's a, be a valuable asset for the library.
Very good, Paula. I agree.
I love the library.
All right. Do we have a motion to appoint Diane Ruxton to the term ending 2026, but she has to run again, so.
It'll be through the, it'll be through the town annual election in May of 2024.
Okay.
So I will make a motion to appoint Diane Ruxton to the Halifax Homes Public Library Board of Trustees for a term ending May 18th, 2024.
When do papers come out? I have to remind her to get her
They usually
And get them signed, so I get them in on time this time.
They're usually March, I believe.
I believe so, but if you check, the Town Park always posts it, so if you check the website, it'll be on.
No, they usually are earlier than that. Used to be, I don't know.
Early, or late fall, late winter, start checking.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
We have a meeting next week, and you have to be there.
I will be there. I will be there.
Did you sign that, bad boy?
I did sign it.
Okay.
Yeah, you did.
Okay. So
Community preservation is, I guess we could do that now, right?
We can. Yeah. We just have to see if we're going to come.
All right. The next thing on our agenda is Community Preservation Act Overview Presentation, and let's go. We have
Hey, Chase, are you there? So Jonathan, you may want to start and give a little bit of a preface here.
Sure, sure. So just a little bit of background on this, you guys. About, oh gosh, about 10 years ago, I started work to rebuild our playground here in town in researching and
We got to leave it open.
Got to leave that open. So researching the best way to try to create a playground, I would talk to folks in other communities, and they would say, just use your CPA money. And I'd say, well, what is that? And they say, it's the Community Preservation Act. It's a program where your town basically reinvests in your town. And other communities I spoke with had extremely, extremely good results with it. So I checked with us, and unfortunately, we're one of the few towns in our area that are not part of the CPA. If it's funny, I hope Chase, so Chase is from the state, I hope he has the map of CPA communities. It's a giant map of very colorful spots, except for a couple in our area. We're one of the few towns in the area that don't do it. It's essentially a program where we are basically reinvesting in Halifax in four basic areas. I don't want to steal Chase's thunder, because he's going to go through all this, but it's essential that the town folks will agree to put money into four different areas: open space, historical, recreational, and housing. So it's those four buckets, if you will, to put money into. The state will match our money to a certain percent every year. Last year, I want to say it was around 30-something percent. I don't want to misquote Chase. He'll have the exact number. So yeah, there you go. There's our community there. So you can see in the green and the yellow, both of those colors are communities that are part of CPA. 100, I'm going to butcher the numbers. I believe it's 185 communities in the state are part of this program. Not one has pulled out of this program since they've started. So in my opinion, to me, this is a no-brainer. To me, this is us investing in Halifax. I hear a lot of folks say they want to keep Halifax how Halifax is. That's essentially what this program was invented for, to reinvest into our open spaces, say, if we don't want something developed on, to improve our areas that need improvement as far as recreation goes. I don't know if you guys have been down to the tennis courts or the basketball courts. They're going to need to be redone very soon, if not already. Our historical, half of our buildings here are historical and over 100-something years old. We need money to redo those. And housing as well. So to me, it's almost irresponsible for us to not consider this. They're projects we're going to have to do, so why not have the state kick in a percentage of the money on these projects that we know are facing us anyway? So that's my exposure with CPA. It's, I'm not going to lie, it'll probably be a hard sell in this town because everybody is anti-tax, and I get it, but I'm hoping that Chase can explain to you guys, this isn't a huge jump in a tax bill. This is, we're talking maybe 1% of your tax bill per year. So let's say your tax bill is $8,000. I don't know what, you know, for round numbers, it's $80 a year, right?
And a lot of times, you can have an exemption on your first
Correct. You can, we can set exemptions. We can kind of set, if there's an exemption as to the value of the home, we can, we can set that exemption, too. We have some leeway. And what you do is we would set up a CPA community commission essentially, with members of the community, and we would decide as a town where that money would be spent. Again, I don't know many investments where you get 30% on your dollar. It's pretty rare these days. So to me, after hearing about the CPA all those years ago, I thought it was absolutely worth kicking the tires on for Halifax, because to me, it's a missed opportunity. If that money's there, these are projects we know we're going to have to do. Let's get some help to pay them.
Does this have to be, it'll be on the Spring Town Meeting, is it planned?
It would have to, yeah.
And how does it have to pass, by just a simple majority, or?
Chase can get into
Yeah, let's have Chase. Chase is paid to talk about this, so we'll let Chase take over if he's available. Chase, are you there? Yes, I'm there.
No, he's not.
That was horrible.
There you go.
That was horrible.
Well, there he is. Can we hear, Chase, we can't hear you. Hold on, one sec here.
Are you muted by any chance, Chase?
Doesn't say he's muted.
It's set on my end.
There we go.
It's showing audio from mine. You guys can't hear anything I'm saying?
You're good, go ahead.
Oh, all right. Well, I can't see any of you, but I'm guessing that you can probably see me at this point.
We can.
So, all right, great. Well, thank you for inviting me to speak about the Community Preservation Act. My name is Chase Mack. I'm the Communications Director for the Community Preservation Coalition, which is a nonprofit that helps municipalities understand, implement, and adopt the CPA program. So I've got a PowerPoint presentation that is kind of my crash course on CPA that I've given a few times this year already. I will let you guys know Halifax is far from the only community that is considering CPA for next year. We have a list of probably over 20 communities at this point that have expressed interest in an adoption effort. So you're in good company. Let me see if I can share my screen here. So it's saying, the host is disabled participant screen sharing. I don't know if that's something you can give permission for, Cody?
Yeah, let me give you permission, one minute here. Okay, it should be all set.
Great, all right. Can everybody see this opening screen here?
Yes.
Looks like it.
All right, great. So we're taking you through the crash course. Basically, since I can't see anybody, if we can save questions for the end, I'll try to rattle through this because there's always great questions after we go through the basics. But it sounded like Cody actually gave a great introduction just on the core, you know, of what the program is. But hopefully, this will give you a much better idea of what is CPA? How does it work? And why should we want it for our town? So, yep. So this is, as I explained, we're part of the Community Preservation Coalition. We were founded back in 2000, back when the CPA legislation was passed. And we were organized by these nonprofit organizations. So we have open space advocates like Mass Audubon and Trust for Public Land on our steering committee, as well as Preservation Massachusetts for Historic. And we have CHAPA and Maha as our housing organizational partners. So all of these organizations serve on our steering committee, as well as representatives directly from CPA communities and at-large members. And we are, you know, CPA is considered a local program, so there is no state department that oversees CPA. We kind of fill a lot of that role and we kind of function like a municipal trade association for CPA communities. But we also help out communities that are looking at CPA and, you know, trying to figure out how to navigate the adoption process. So very happy to be here today. This is our website, communitypreservation.org. This is my baby, is the Communications Director. Anything you could want to learn about CPA, you can probably find it on this website. So if you have not visited it before, I highly encourage you to check it out. There's tons of great information here. But to start with, what is the Community Preservation Act? It's state legislation, unique to Massachusetts, that was passed into law in 2000 by Governor Salucci. And if it had passed back in 2000 and there was no coalition to kind of tell folks about it and advocate for it, it might have just, you know, laid in languish. But we really, in those early days, promoted it a lot because it has to be adopted at the local level by each municipality. And what it enables communities to do is create a dedicated CPA fund, which can be used for historic preservation, open space, outdoor recreation, and community housing. And we do have folks ask, you know, why is it these four categories that CPA was designed for? And the reason for that is that in the typical kind of municipal budgeting process, these are the areas that frequently struggle to find funding year to year. These are quality of life issues that when they're stacked up against, you know, police or school or, you know, what have you, they often fall by the wayside. So what CPA allows municipalities to do is create this dedicated funding source that can be only used for these quality of life, community character areas. And it has been phenomenally successful in those 20-plus years since it was signed into law. There are a total of 195 cities and towns that have adopted CPA. So we have over half of the municipalities, but we have 70% of Massachusetts residents now living in a CPA community. In the last 10 years or so, we picked up a lot of cities throughout the state, which has really bumped that number up. And I believe I heard Cody mention this, but we've never had a community revoke CPA after they adopted it. In fact, there's only been three attempts in the history of the program of a municipality trying to revoke, and all of them were soundproofed, defeated. So once folks have CPA, they're very reluctant to let it go. And I know you were excited to see the map, so here is our CPA map. All of the towns that have CPA are lit up in green. All of the cities are lit up in orange. And as you'll see, Halifax down there, you guys have a lot of CPA neighbors. Which if you do decide to, you know, promote a CPA campaign, that can actually be a boon because you'll be able to point to your neighbors and say like, look at how much they've been able to accomplish with CPA. I don't think I have a program like this. These give you, these figures give you a perspective of just what CPA's been able to accomplish at the state level. And these numbers are actually a year out of date at this point. We are going to have updated figures probably by the end of this month. But there's probably another 1,000 or 2,000 more projects that have been done by municipalities since we came up with these. But as you see here, CPA has been able to accomplish a ton of amazing projects throughout the state, across all the categories. So how does CPA work? How, where does this funding come from? How does it get implemented for these projects? So the way it works is the funding comes from two sources. The first is the local CPA surcharge, which I did hear a little bit of an explanation about that before I joined. So that surcharge can be up to 3%, and it's a surcharge on local property tax bills. It is not a, you know, if you adopt a 1% CPA surcharge, we do hear folks say, you're going to increase my taxes by 1%. Not the case. It's a 1% surcharge on the property tax bill. So I think the example given was if your property tax bill was $8,000 for the year and your town had a 1% CPA surcharge, you would see $80 as what that person would pay towards your local CPA fund. Now, if that was the only funding source, it would be a tough sell to get CPA adopted anywhere. But one of the magic components of the program is the statewide CPA trust fund. It is a true trust fund that the funding only goes towards CPA municipalities and it matches a percentage of each municipality grades at the local level. So I'll have an example later here. But every community that adopts CPA, they decide what level surcharge they want to adopt, as well as there are several exemptions that are available, which almost every community nowadays adopts the basic exemptions because they just, they help the folks that need help the most. So talking about the surcharge, it could be anywhere up to 3%. But that maximum 3% surcharge, there are a lot of communities that have that maximum, but it's very, very rare nowadays. The vast majority of those communities adopted CPA in the first few years of the program. A lot of things have changed since then, over those 20-plus years. And it's just a tough sell to go for that full 3% surcharge nowadays. Communities find the most success with a 1% or 1.5% surcharge. That seems to have the highest success ratio in the last 10 years or so. And $50 is kind of what we recommend aiming for as a sweet spot of like an average annual homeowner cost to CPA. We can help you figure out what that range might look like for Halifax. We're able to kind of calculate estimates of what the cost and revenue would look like for your town. So I'm happy to work with you guys to come up with those figures. But as I mentioned, there's also exemptions available. You can exempt the first $100,000 of either residential property or commercial property. You can completely exempt low-income individuals and families, as well as low-to-moderate income seniors. And so those three, those first three exemptions, almost everybody adopts those at this point because it really just provides relief to the folks that need it most. So it's kind of a no-brainer. We kind of universally recommend those first three exemptions. The last option available is a full commercial exemption. That is only available to communities with a split tax rate. I don't know if that-
We do not.
...qualifies for Halifax, but that one's incredibly rare. I think there's maybe only one or two communities in the state that have that. But it is an option. Here is the math breakdown. I won't dwell too long here, but this gives you an example of exactly how that CPA surcharge amount is calculated. So this is an example of a community with a 1% CPA surcharge with the exemption for the first $100,000 of property value. So you'll see that first $100,000 is taken right off. That means that there's about $300,000 of home value kind of evaluated when it comes to the surcharge. The 1% ends up being about $50 a year. And I can send, we frequently ask, you know, can we get the slides for this presentation afterwards? I'm happy to send those to you later this week. If someone just reminds me, I can get a PDF copy and you can send that around. So if anyone wants to take a closer look at that. So that is where the local fund comes from, that local surcharge. But what about the CPA trust fund? Where does that revenue come from? So that comes from two sources primarily. The first is, the vast majority of the CPA trust fund is funded through fees at the state registries of deeds. So what that means is anytime anyone, anywhere in the state goes to one of the registry of deeds and they file any kind of paperwork, mortgage, deed, whatever, when they go to checkout at the counter, they will see a CPA fee applied to each of those documents. They are, most documents, they're $50. There is, I think, municipal lien certificates are $25. But all of those fees are collected all across the state and pooled in the CPA trust fund. And those are collected all year round and every year in November. So actually, we will be kind of promoting to communities what their match is in just about a week or so. It's November 15th is when that happens. But the other source of the funding, that is a lot of our advocacy work on the Coalition's part, is we represent CPA municipalities at the state level, at the State House, working with the legislature to acquire additional funds for the trust fund in the form of usually what is state budget surplus funds. So, you know, the state, when they run the budget, whatever money is left over from the previous year's budget, we have succeeded, I think, nine out of the last 10, 12 years, we've managed to secure additional funding for the trust fund from those surplus funds. So for an example, last year, we were successful in acquiring $20 million in surplus funds for the CPA trust fund, which supplemented those fees collected at the registries. And what that ultimately meant is last year, in November, all CPA municipalities received a base match of 38.5% of what they raised at the local level. So that means if a town raised $100,000 from their local CPA surcharge, the state then provided them a check for $38,500, a 38.5% match on that $100,000 amount. So that is how the trust fund works. It, we can't predict future matches because it varies so wildly depending on the real estate market, you know, with those registry fees collecting and everything, and whether there's surplus funds available. So as nice it is to see 38.5% last year, I do want to point out that this year is probably not going to be close to that. We're looking at probably a 20% match just in the next couple weeks here. And I won't go too far into it unless anybody's really curious. But as you can imagine, with rising interest rates and increasing home prices, the frequency of those kind of things passing through the registry has been diminished quite a lot in the last year. So it's not going to be quite as high as it was last year. But we have a full history of those matches on our website. If you look for the trust fund section, if you're curious to see how that's kind of changed over the years. But we work very hard to make sure that it's a sustainable, healthy match for CPA municipalities. So that's the background on the funding. Now, I'm sure the question that I know you're all asking is how would we adopt it in Halifax? And the first step would be to, CPA needs to be passed at a ballot, as a ballot question. So there are two ways to actually advance CPA to the ballot. The first is through a legislative body vote, which I believe in your case would be town meeting. For cities, it's a city council. And what that means is you would present a CPA proposal and you'd place it on your town meeting warrant. If it passed at town meeting, that would then advance the question of CPA to the next regularly scheduled election as a ballot question. There is an alternate means of putting it on the ballot, which is to collect signatures from 5% of registered voters in your community. And you'd think that might be like an emergency option, but that's not actually the case. I think about a third of all communities that have adopted CPA have done so through collecting signatures. So it really depends on kind of local political atmosphere. If you think it'd be untenable to get it through town meeting, but you think that, you know, if you've got the grassroots support to collect signatures, we had a lot of communities pass CPA that day. So then, once you've done that, it moves to the ballot. And as long as it passes by a majority at the ballot as a yes or no ballot question, that is the last step for adopting CPA. So it's that two-step process. The first would be town meeting or collecting signatures, and then it would need to pass at a local ballot election. And I know that, like I mentioned, there are a lot of communities looking at 2024 for their adoption campaigns. And the reason is that CPA almost always benefits from higher turnout elections. The kind of program it is, it requires a lot of like education and outreach, but the more that people understand how it works and more they learn about how other communities have used it, it benefits from the more people go into the polls, CPA has a higher success rate. So next year, we have a presidential election in November, which is the main reason why so many communities are looking at CPA for 2024. Compared to like, say, a local spring election, it's just your town's local election, those historically have about a 50% success rate at the ballot. Excuse me. One second. So those local elections have about a 50% success rate. When you move to a presidential election, a really high turnout election, CPA success rate jumps up to above 80%. So that is the main reason why you and many other communities are looking at CPA, is that 2024 is going to be an excellent year to attempt at a CPA adoption campaign. So now we move into, you know, you understand where the money comes from, you understand how to pass it, what happens after you pass CPA? And the first step is that every municipality that adopts the CPA program puts together what's called a Community Preservation Committee. And this committee is charged with, and we'll get to the next slide, but they basically organize and they're a key component of the CPA project approval process, which I'll explain in a second. But it has five statutory representatives from these five boards, which you'll notice correspond to the main categories of CPA, open space, historic- correspond to the main categories of CPA: open space, historic, recreation, housing, and then the planning board. Does that make sense? And then every municipality can also have up to four additional seats on that committee. The majority of communities do opt in to having those four extra seats, but it is entirely up to your, it's up to each community to decide how those seats are distributed and who serves on them. They can be from other boards or committees in towns. They can even be elected. We have a couple of communities that folks actually run for reelection to be a part of the CPC. So that is, it varies wildly from community to community. But that is how that committee is structured. And their role in the CPA process is they assess the community's CPA needs across the categories, and they actually create what's called a CPA plan. This is a required component of a CPA program. It's in the legislation. Your CPC puts together a plan which analyzes across those areas opportunities and needs that the community really wants to see happen across open space, historic, housing. And then they also create a project, a project application process. So each municipality determines their timeline, they create an application, they create the criteria by which the committee kind of analyzes these for eligibility and how well projects fit into their CPA plan. And they also, they have to have a public hearing every year, so there is a lot of public input. The Community Preservation Act, the key word is actual community. It's a very local, community-focused type of program, from top to bottom, the way it's constructed. And so, once they've created that application process, they take in applications from the community for project proposals, and they then recommend CPA projects each year to your town meeting for final approval. And both steps of those, of that process are required for every CPA project. The CPC must make a recommendation to town meeting for it to be considered for funding, and town meeting subsequently has to vote to approve that funding for it to receive CPA funds. So there is, again, this component of local control. It is ultimately the citizens of Halifax that would decide on what projects would receive CPA funding each year. And here's just a flow chart of exactly what I've described of how each project gets through the funding process. As far as what communities are required to do in regards to their CPA fund each year, it's actually quite flexible. Each of the three main categories, housing, for the purposes of the spending requirements, open space and outdoor recreation are considered a joint category. The reason they're usually separate is they have slightly different allowable uses. There are slightly different rules around how you can use CPA funds. But for the spending, each category has to receive either spend or reserve ten percent of your total CPA revenue into each category. The remaining seventy percent is totally flexible. They can be changed year to year depending on priorities. We have some communities that adopt CPA with a very specific category in mind. The one that I always go to, because they've been in the program for twenty-plus years, is the city of Cambridge actually adopted CPA as a housing program. So they dedicate the full maximum amount, eighty percent of their CPA funds, towards the housing category every year. Whereas we have other communities that use it more for open space or, again, treat it as a flexible account year to year, as long as each category is getting that required ten percent. And then optionally, communities can set aside five percent of their revenue for administrative expenses on behalf of the CPC. So that's making sure that the committee has funds to be able to do their job, to hire a part-time administrator, things like that. This, right here, is maybe the most important graphic with anything to do with CPA, which is the allowable uses chart. And I won't dwell here too long, but I would encourage you to check out the article on our website that has this allowable uses chart, because it will break down a little more detail of what each of these categories, what you're allowed to do. And so you'll see the four categories of CPA across the top, and then there are several verbs along the first column here. And these are defined verbs in the CPA legislation, but you can look up and see exactly how each of these are defined, but each category has certain verbs that are applicable. So the one that I always go to is historic preservation. You can acquire historic properties or artifacts. You can preserve them, prevent from injury, harm, or destruction, or you can rehabilitate or restore, like a historic town hall building. You'd be able to use CPA funds to rehabilitate the exterior or something like that. However, you cannot create something in the historic preservation category. You cannot create something new that is historically significant. Most often, that comes from folks asking, well, can we build a statue that honors something in our town's history? And unfortunately, the answer's no, because CPA is, it had very specific uses in mind when they crafted the legislation. But you'll see this chart, it breaks down for each category, so I'm happy to kind of answer questions there at the end of the presentation. But that gives you an idea of what is possible with CPA. And here is the end of my crash course, but I will rattle through what are some of the most popular uses of CPA nowadays, just to give you an idea of the types of projects that CPA would fund. So in historic preservation, as I mentioned, a very popular use is the restoration of historic municipal buildings, adaptive reuse of historic buildings, so taking what may have once been, you know, the old town library from the eighteen hundreds, but they built a new library, renovate that old library and turn it into a community center, as long as you're following the historic preservation guidelines. You can provide CPA grants to nonprofits that are in, you know, care tape, important historic assets, that's a valid use of CPA. Historic document preservation, you can, we have plenty of projects where they have these old documents from the seventeen hundreds that the towns had forever, and you can use CPA to restore these and prevent them from being deteriorated further. In the open space side of things, you can preserve agricultural land, vulnerable conservation space, you can protect drinking water supplies. And once you move into outdoor recreation, unlike open space, which is typically considered like conservation land, the recreation side of things are playgrounds, athletic fields, biking trails, parks, community gardens. These are all awesome projects that CPA communities are usually very excited. Recreation's like the easy one to identify. I think I heard someone say that you've got basketball courts or tennis court courts. Pickleball has become wildly popular the last few years. All of that stuff can be funded through a CPA program. And then the housing side of things, CPA is actually a little more flexible than a lot of other housing programs, which are usually focused on what's called low-income housing. And that's defined as eighty percent of area-wide median income intended for those individuals. CPA actually allows municipalities to invest in up to moderate-income housing, which is defined as a hundred percent of area-wide median income. It's not to say you can't use CPA for a low-income housing initiative, but it allows a little more flexibility. You can go up to that hundred percent level for housing units. Very popular use for housing for veterans and for elderly population. Again, adaptive reuse is an excellent use of CPA funds. You have an old historic building that can be adapted into housing that can totally happen with CPA. Specialized needs, we have communities on the Cape that actually, I think it was about six or seven communities, that they all have CPA, and they actually collaborated together. Each of these communities all pitched in funds from their local CPA accounts into creating regional housing for adults with developmental issues, because they saw it as a regional housing issue that they all kind of collaborated together for something like that. Habitat for Humanity is another great example of a partner that CPA can kind of kick in the funds that those organizations are looking for to create new housing in your community. And that's my crash course. I try to really speed through it as quickly and concisely as possible, because I know that folks have a lot of questions, but I hope that wasn't too fast. But I think we can open the floor for anything else that anyone wants to know. I can jump back to another slide if you want to see something again, but I'm here to help you understand this program and answer any questions you have.
Anybody have any questions?
Yep, we have one.
Erica Rossini, Sixth Derron Road. So if the team of people got together and came up with, let's say, four different projects, they would present all four projects at a town meeting? And then...
No, there's typically an application period, and it would be open to nonprofits, town departments, anyone in town. You would submit the applications to the local, the Halifax Community Preservation Committee, and then they would be the ones to recommend projects to town meeting, the projects that they have approved.
And then if it were to get voted down at town meeting, then what happens? That project just, they would have to reapply? And the money would just grow?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. For context, wherever that mic is, I can't quite make out, I think I was able to get the gist of the question that you were able to answer, but whatever that mic is, someone will have to repeat the question for me if I need to answer.
Okay, that's fine.
Any other comments or questions from anyone?
I just, again, I know I'm the one that brought this to the table tonight. I just, I hear it all the time, we want to keep Halifax Halifax. And this is essentially a Community Preservation Act. It's in the name. It's what it's intended to do. And I always think of how Halifax would look had we done this earlier, and the things that have kind of been left by the wayside because of budget problems, how they would have been taken care of if we'd jumped on this earlier. So I do feel like Halifax is late to the game, but if we have all these projects coming down the pike, and you know we do, why not get extra money for the state? And the state isn't controlling it. We're controlling how we spend it. I know I hear that a lot. I don't want the state telling us how to spend our money. We would decide on the projects that we want to do. And to me, it almost feels irresponsible that that money is there and we're snubbing our noses at it. So that's my take.
So the process would be, we'd have to put an article on the Springtown meeting, and then election in May.
We'd probably do the election in November, the presidential election.
I thought he said it had to be the next one. It doesn't have to be...
Yes, so it's the next one, but the town meeting vote, it's the next election after forty-five days. They can't be like right, you know, if you have a town election the week after your town meeting, it can't be that election, because it has to be forty-five days after the town meeting vote. So as you rightly figured out, the vast majority of communities next year for CPA adoption, they will be presenting, they will have a town meeting warrant article for a CPA measure on their Springtown meeting warrant. Any of those that pass, it would then advance the question of CPA adoption to the November 2024 presidential election.
Okay, that's good. Okay. So we need to put a placeholder on our warrant to put this in effect and...
Yeah, we can. This is really just to introduce the community and the board to Community Preservation Act and get an overall feeling of, is there support? Is this something we want to continue to investigate? Just get a feeling of it. Something Jonathan had been working on.
Do you have a question?
Has anyone brought any numbers of what our process could be able to look like?
It depends on, we would have to figure out what we would want to do for a surcharge, but we certainly can do that. This is really just a very, very...
Kick the tires. Yeah. See if you guys are interested.
And that is something that the Coalition can help you with. We have an in-house calculator that allows us to create a projections spreadsheet for you that would break down average homeowner costs and total local revenue across all kinds of different scenarios. So you can see what it would look like at one percent, two percent, two and a half percent. You can see what the revenue and the cost would look like, as well as what the, you know, if you adopted this exemption, these two exemptions, you can, it'll break it all down for you. So we're happy to assist with something like that.
Should be easy enough to figure out. Just take the property tax and take one percent, whatever the gross property tax is.
And I encourage people to check out the website. You know, when I first kind of was looking at it, it's great. It explains it in simple terms that I think most folks can understand. Even I understood it. So I just urge people to at least investigate this. I think it's, I think it'd be a great thing for Halifax.
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation. It was very helpful. It sounds like we have at least some interest in the room here, so we'll be looking forward to talking about this at the annual town meeting or at least in beforehand. So I don't think anyone else has any questions for you, so appreciate your time. Thank you again.
Thanks, Chase.
Excellent.
Thanks, Chase.
Thank you for having me. And if anyone ever, you know, if you have any other questions or, you know, want to hash out an idea of what the campaign process would look like, you can always drop us a line. We're happy to help.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Bye-bye.
All right. The next appointment we have is with the building commissioner, or potential building commissioner, Mr. Bailey. Am I saying that right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. If you want to come on up to the mic there, that way we can record it and everyone can hear.
So I can preface a little here.
Sure.
So as you know, we've been actively recruiting for a building commissioner. We reposted the position with first review of applications occurring on November 2nd. We interviewed, we had an internal interview team, as requested by the board, myself, Scott Materna, our director of facilities, and Mike Withermore, fire chief, just the major, those positions work together often. And we interviewed a few candidates. Mr. Bailey was a unanimous choice by all of us. He has experience as a local inspector in the towns of Dennis and then also the town of Dartmouth. He's actually been serving as the interim building commissioner in the town of Dartmouth. Prior to that, he was a project manager for over twenty years overseeing large-scale construction projects. He's a certified ICC building commissioner and also is building commissioner recognized by the state of Massachusetts. So our internal committee wanted to bring him forward and request that you appoint him as the next building commissioner in Halifax.
Okay. Do you want to tell us anything about yourself that we haven't already heard?
So that, I mean, that says about it. I've been working in construction since about the day I could walk. My grandmother had a company, my father. So I've always been around it in some way, shape, or form. And this was just kind of the next natural step to go from building it to policing it.
And you've been doing the building commissioners' work for the last couple of years? Is that what it is?
So I've been a local inspector for the last three years, out in Dennis and then in Dartmouth. And just recently, the building commissioner in Dartmouth retired, so I was named interim building commissioner, kind of in his stead.
All right. Looks like we're doing pretty good pirating out of Dartmouth.
Wonder how you heard about it?
Yeah, just stumbled upon.
We've had really good luck so far, so I feel real good about this. Anybody have any questions or...
Just, why is the job a fit, if you don't mind?
So this is something I've been doing for years. As much as I did like Dartmouth, it's, the community's growing a little bigger than the town's ready for, in my opinion. I like the smaller-town feel of Halifax. I love being in Dennis. That was just a commute issue for me. So I really do prefer the kind of small-town feel versus the big city.
That's why we live here. That's very true. Okay. We have a motion to appoint Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. We've been, this is a spot that's needed to be filled for quite some time, so I'm excited that we'll get some traction on this, so I will make a motion to appoint, I don't want to mispronounce your name here.
Bailey.
Ed Bailey as our Halifax building commissioner.
Okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. I can't wait to sit down and talk with you about a bunch of ideas, so...
Uh, pass. Absolutely. Can't wait to, can't wait to get on the job and start exploring the town.
Congratulations. Wonderful to have your board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
I'll touch base. Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Now, it says approval for commissioner's starting salary. I don't think we already did that.
No, so we approved the adjustment to a different range, to a different grade. But because in our negotiations with Mr. Bailey, we would need to bring him in at higher than step one, that requires approval by the waiting personnel, so it's before you and... So it's before you and then it'll be before the finance committee on Monday.
So you want us to approve him? What's the motion exactly?
It would be approval to start him at grade 12A, step five.
So I will make that motion that we start Mr. Bailey at grade 12A, step five.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Good. Okay. Let's skip right down to the Morse Brothers' earth removal permit. We put this on the agenda tonight just to keep track of it because we do have to make a decision by the 14th?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. So Cody and I talked about this right before the meeting, and I'm going to suggest that maybe we set it next Wednesday, the 15th, to make a decision. How's that fit with your thoughts?
The 15th?
Yeah? No?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So 6 o'clock work?
Sure.
All right. So I'll move that we schedule a here, a meeting for November 15th at 6:00 PM for the purposes of dealing with the Morse Brothers' earth removal permit.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
I recuse myself of...
Just one question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So yesterday with all the questions that were asked, so on that next meeting, is that what I'm interested in beginning to the public and then you'll also make a decision on it?
Yeah.
And then we would also have all the restrictions in place to present that to them on that incentive?
I'm sorry, all the what?
The restrictions.
Oh, so the way to work, if, assume, the board hasn't decided anything yet, so, but assume we did decide to issue a permit. Permit, if you've seen the application, the permit looks like that. There are certain conditions, so the board would set the various conditions in there, in the permit itself. So yes.
So everything will be done next month, is that...
Yes.
We'll try to compile a list of questions that were asked and get as many of them answered and posted over the next week on our website. And if there's any outstanding, we'll do our best to answer them at the meeting.
I have, I have five pages of notes from that night, and I've shared the questions that I wrote down with Cody, and we're going to try to answer as almost all that we can.
Aren't they though for kind of Morse Brothers to answer that?
I'm sorry.
Those questions, don't they seem, they seem like they were kind of questions from Morse Brothers or are they questions about whether you guys can put them in the permit that you're going to give them, saying we'll give you the permit, but under these restrictions? Is that how it goes or is it...
We had, so just, just to kind of, just to bring this to a head, kind of, the public hearing, obviously this is a, a subject of interest in, at least in some parts of town. And we're aware of that and we're sensitive to it. So we've been trying to be carefully looking at all of the different aspects of it from everybody's point of view. So the bylaw requires, once a permit's applied for, that we hold a public hearing, which we did last night. Purpose of the public hearing is so that we can hear all the questions, all the evidence, whatever anybody wants to tell us about. There were a lot of questions asked about specific things. I mean, there's a couple of categories that came up pretty often, water, traffic, that kind of thing. So we, we all have those questions. We'll discuss them next week. Hopefully we'll have all the answers we possibly can get on those. I think we have some anyway already, but we'll, we'll deal with them at that time. And then assuming the board decides to vote yes on the permit, which we haven't done yet, so you can't really assume we'll do it. But if we do, then the permit itself would be issued with a list of conditions. And the permits look a lot like, like the application or our engineers report. There's, I think, 15 categories or something that are in the bylaw itself that have to be addressed one way or another. So all of those types of things. And that includes the amount of earth to be removed, includes the well monitoring, the elevation, all of that kind of stuff. That's all in the permit itself. Okay? All right. So we'll take this up on Wednesday at 6 o'clock. It'll be on our website. It's being recorded by Area 58, so we'll try to get the word out for anyone that might be interested in attending. All right, good. So let's go back to the beginning. Start at the very beginning. Deal with some of these minutes and so on. So we have approval of selectmen's minutes?
From approved, selectmen's minutes for regular session October 10th, 2023, regular session October 31st, 2023.
And I will, I will make a motion to approve the minutes executive session for October 31st, 2023.
All right. So let's do the Naj's two first.
Sure.
We have the ballot, so we have a second on that.
Yes.
And all those in favor of the two regular session minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. As far as executive session, Mr. Seelig made the motion. I'll second it. Any further discussion on the executive session minutes?
No, Naj is just going to abstain.
And Naj is, okay. And so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? One abstention is Mr. Nazrallah. Okay. Okay. Warrants and commitments?
Move to affirm the approval of warrants and commitments. Vendor warrant number 38 for $442,757.57. Ambulance commitment from 10/16, 2023 to 10/22, 2023 for $60,835.75. Ambulance commitments from 10/23, 2023 to 10/29, 2023 for $30,892.19.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. More warrants, I guess?
I move to approve the following warrants. Payroll warrant number 39 for $449,763.15. Vendor warrant number 40 for $75,557.39. Withholding warrant number 41 for $156,468.52. Mobile home park fee number 11 for $5,148.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Ambulance abatements? Down about, under discussion?
What do we got?
October 2023.
Warrant, approve of October 2023 for $86,198.87.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Boards and committees on providing a meeting schedule. Cody, you want to address that for us?
Sure. So just in order to better plan our meeting space and also just, you know, one of the goals that you've all expressed to me is the transparency with the public, I drafted this memorandum that I would request that the board approve to send out to all of our boards and committees. Ultimately, just requesting that they create a schedule for calendar year 2024. Obviously, things come up and meetings may have to change, be added or removed, but if we can get our boards and committees to create this and we can post this on our website and give people more advanced notice of when our meetings will be, we did this with the Board of Selectmen earlier this year for the remainder of calendar 23, and I think it's just a good idea. It also just allows for better planning of spaces and transparency with the public.
I had your memo here somewhere.
Right here.
Yep. Okay. So, thank you. So the memorandum that was drafted that we're being asked to approve, the Board of Selectmen voted to request that all boards and committees within the town adopt a meeting schedule for the calendar year 2024. And as Cody said, not only will this allow for transparency to the public, also assist in adequately reserving meeting space. The information will also be passed along to Area 58 to ensure proper recording of applicable meetings. Once a board or committee has adopted a meeting schedule, have it posted on the town's website, and any difficulties, we can handle that too. So this is your copy. Okay. All right. So any discussion?
It's a great idea. The more heads up we give people, the better.
I thought that most of them, though, are all, like, the finance committee's always on a certain day with...
They are, but they do change sometimes. And even like us, we've had to change, we changed for November and December with holidays. So it's nice to just get out ahead of it and plan accordingly.
Chris?
Chris Woodhills, 129 Sixth Street. I just want to say to Cody, it's nice to, like, the major boards to overlap, because I know conservation changed there nights a few months ago, because it was always the same night the Selectmen's meeting was. So it's nice when they don't overlap too.
Well, we tried to, but sometimes it's just...
Yeah. That was my same comment.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, you know, there's, there's five days in a week, so we'll try to make use of all of them, hopefully. And we only have so much space anyway, so that's even more of a complication, so. All right. I'll move that we approve the letter and send it out.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. We're down to updates on our standing heads, as they say in the newspaper.
MBTA Action Plan. I think I had mentioned the last meeting on the, a week from today, our consultant will be coming into the zoning bylaw review committee to give an update on his progress, looking at the MBTA Action Plan, the 3A zoning, get feedback from the committee. No real new updates for training for boards and committees. As far as my update goes, we have a few items. So I spoke with Steve Hayward, our highway surveyor, today. Although the Pine Street Bridge has been delayed, we are at the end. The Water Main passed its final inspection today, which was one of the major holdups. They're going through a punch list at this point, and we anticipate having the bridge open by the end of next week. So that's great news. You will notice that the town hall is lit up in blue for the month of November in the honor of Diabetes Awareness Month. And a little trivia question for Mr. Seelig here. Do you know why it's in November?
Anybody?
I have no idea.
November, diabetes month, why?
It's high sugar.
No, it's not Halloween sugar. God, it's terrible. No. Dr. Banting, the man that invented insulin, was born in November 14th. So guys saved millions of lives, so that is why November is Diabetes Awareness Month. So we will be blue this month.
Very good. Our capital plans were due today from all of our departments, so we will start reviewing those internally and then schedule meetings with our capital planning committee and eventually get to this board and the finance committee. November 16th, we have a public hearing, the planning board has a public hearing for the proposed zoning changes to take place on Mont Ponce Street that Thorndike Development is proposing. So that is on the 16th.
Do you know, do you have a time for that?
I think it's 7:00 PM. I believe it's 7:00 PM. The new October episode of Cody's Corner has been released.
I saw it.
Huge hit.
It's a blockbuster.
Please take a look, give me some feedback. I appreciate it. And our cable TV, we've been negotiating a new cable contract with Comcast. Those negotiations have pretty much finished up. I have a meeting with our attorney, who has been representing us next week, to go over those final changes, and we should have it before the board, probably in our next meeting or the 21st, to go over those and get the final approval on that contract. And the only other update is our next meeting, we will have the town meeting warrant for you to approve, the meeting on the 21st. Articles, if anyone has a petition article, will be due that day at 10:00 AM. And just a reminder, that does require the 100 signatures, not the typical 10 for an annual meeting.
Can I, going back to the zoning board, the zoning bylaw review committee and the MBTA guy, will that, that'll be recorded? Can we record it over Channel 58? I don't know if the...
He's going to join us via Zoom and I'll record it and we can post it.
Because I think, I think that's of high public interest. Not just to that committee, obviously, but to all...
Yeah, this, this likely won't be his only interaction with our boards and committees. This is just the first and a good place to start, but we'll start there and record it.
Yeah. I do think it was, it brought a lot of interest when we first started talking about it, and I think it still does, so. All right. Is that it? Anything else?
You know what? As I sit here and look at our surroundings, it's reminding me that we have holidays in Halifax coming up, December 9th. Just want to get the word out. It's traditionally the second Saturday in December. We're keeping tradition this year, so mark your calendars, December 9th, holidays in Halifax, somewhere around 4 to 8-ish. And it's, for those that have gone, it's, it's an awesome event, so excited to bring it back.
Frank?
Frank Johnson, Elm Street. Fireworks, did you hear, John?
We're working on it. We're working on it. We're working hard.
The Tansons just got their fireworks.
Well, they copied us, so that's, I have to put that on the record. Yeah, yeah. We're, we're working on it.